Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and will be available viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:06. First item on the agenda is reorganization.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Aaron Smarts as Chair and Tracy Sharkey as Vice Chair.
Motion's been made in seconds.
A twofer.
Any further discussion? You willing to accept Vice Chair?
Yes, of course. I don't really do much.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we need to nominate somebody for...
CMR PC.
CMR PC.
Well, yep.
I think he's enjoying it, actually.
Somebody want to nominate Les?
I'll nominate.
Second there?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tracy. Anything to say Les? No, you're it. Anybody else opposed, in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. All right. Thank you, everybody. You do have to sign the document tonight to go to the Registry of Deeds. So, the way you sign it on that document is the way you have to sign all of paperwork after that.
Just look at your stamp.
So, yeah, go by your stamp.
Mike.
Keep thinking of dropping that middle initial. It follows me around wherever I go.
All right, first item. A and R Plan, Hayward Homes LLC, Ninety Cedar Street. Is anybody here to present that? Byron here.
Hey Byron.
Got your name up here for the record.
My name is Byron Andrews from Andrews Survey and Engineering. I'm representing Hayward Homes tonight. They are seeking to create three buildable lots of property they own on the corner of Webster Street and Cedar Street. I have full-size copies of the final plan after Bill's comments if you want to look at those. I can be straight.
Is this after Bill's comments?
That's after Bill's comments.
This one on the board?
Yeah, okay. I thought I was pulling that forward. So, this is the property here outlined in yellow.
So, where are we? So, is this the corner? There's a house that was built in that corner down here at the bottom?
Yeah, this is Cedar Street. This is Webster Road. Cedar Street keeps going south.
What's that little corner piece?
This piece right here. Wants Diane Hunter.
I'm just trying to figure out where this is.
That's where the Cedar Street Bridge is, where it was closed for a little while.
Right, but is it on that side of the bridge? On the east side of the bridge?
The bridge is immediately adjacent.
Are they here, on Cedar Street?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's northwest of the bridge.
So, that's the culvert? I mean, that's the outlet there where the water comes in and it goes down?
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you.
So, the full property is outlined in yellow. The proposed new lot lines are in green. The lots all have adequate frontage for the zoning requirements and adequate area. There is...
Frontage is off of sixteen?
What's that?
Frontage is off of Route sixteen?
Yeah, frontage access is right here for this lot here and over here for this lot here.
Could you pull the board forward a little bit, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Like this?
Yep, keep it coming.
Okay.
Give the guys some room to work.
I mean, I got glasses. You think that one a home, right?
But existing frontage on Cedar Street is already there at that house.
Yeah, the existing house would use the frontage on Cedar Street. There are some issues regarding the access. There's a wetland here and a wetland here, but there's a culvert here and they can access through here. Down in this, there's wetlands right here. Down in this area, the very edge of it, you can see there's an area of deeper slopes, kind of the last, I don't know, like twenty feet of it. But until you get there, the slopes are definitely less than ten percent.
So, you're showing the flagged edge there?
Yeah, that's the delineated edge of wetlands.
Then you've got topography line?
Yeah, we have the topography lines.
Next, proposed.
But that's existing topography.
Why is it darkened?
Oh, these are the ten-foot lines.
Oh, okay.
These are the two-foot lines. We just added that because of this area here. I wanted to be able to show it clearly. It has adequate site distance for the zone.
These are all, I'm sorry, existing stone walls that we're seeing?
Yeah, they're existing walls.
Lloyd, any questions? Bill, comments?
I have a question. Does Byron have a check for me?
I do have a check. Fifty dollars.
Yeah, it was pretty much completed when he submitted it. There were very minor comments. It's very straightforward.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R Plan for Ninety Cedar Street.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
So, just for the people watching, we still got to go to conservation with all that?
Yeah, the lots will have to go through conservation and, of course, border health of the septic designs as well.
Sure, sure. We're just approving the A and R.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, good luck with those guys.
Well, see what we can do.
Yeah, one mila. I believe the other one's up.
I know. Through the mila. I have a meeting, it seems, right?
Here's the stack. I don't know which one is going to work. I'll take a handle. Try it. If not, I'll throw some more. All right?
I'm sure she knows.
Usually doesn't happen that way. Add about the fourth one.
Planning Board meetings are shown on Charter.
No. I see everything on YouTube.
Go to YouTube.
Yeah, YouTube. No, I understand that, but is there actually a station? Like number two or three?
Caregiving station?
No, is it?
Probably local access.
But I look it up and I can't find it. I go to Charter.
She has the pretend one. She has that phone on and everything. She doesn't know.
I go to access, you know, on the website for the town? Nothing.
I think it's usually like eleven or twelve.
Is it really? Okay.
I think it's one ninety-two.
One ninety-two and eleven or twelve.
HD, is that HD?
That's your assignment next meeting.
We haven't seen it. I know we can do YouTube.
Who else got to do it?
Aaron?
Yep.
I believe it's channel eleven now. Old charter channel eleven is now channel one ninety-one. Does that sound right?
One ninety-two is...
Did that everybody?
One ninety-one, one ninety-two, and one ninety-four is the school.
Oh, not us.
They switched it up a little.
The rest of them are there?
Yeah.
Says they have old numbers.
Four copies.
Four copies.
Oh, I didn't even sign it.
Thank you.
No, here.
I was looking up the cable channel.
So, you're supposed to get up and come over here.
I know. I was distracted.
Let him into my block.
Sorry.
I'm sure you could have got it recorded anyway.
Byron? Byron?
Yes.
Ha ha, see?
So, I wouldn't forget it.
I was going to pull the chair out as you came.
Trip me as I go.
Thank you, Byron.
Thanks, Byron.
Oh, I have that written down.
Now you're going to have it.
I can tell you that later. And they do respond to it.
Do you have these, Phil?
Thank you. Next one on the agenda. Heirs to Alice Chase, Orange Street. Anybody want to see this? This is it, right here.
Yep. Is the engineer presenting?
No.
Yes, the engineer is.
So, you really have no comments on the plan?
No, very minor.
Right here, if anyone wants to see them.
Can you take a look?
So, they're making one lot out of one additional lot?
Yeah.
That is enormous. Six and a quarter acres. That's all they have is the frontage. Well, this is part of the same property.
The new Allen and the Anne.
Two oh one eight dash thirteen?
This is something?
Those are only two.
That's the one to cut down.
So, they're creating just lot number one.
Oh, that's lot number one.
Leave it at that.
Yeah, remainder.
That's the remainder.
Yes.
Okay, we think it looks good, Bill?
Yes.
No comments?
No comments.
The only thing?
What?
Hundred thirty-four.
Doesn't matter.
I know. They're doing that one.
Yeah.
Public street, unapproved, public septic.
Where's Hal's cell down here?
I think he's down sixty or sixty.
Well, it's not going to show one here because...
Which way is sixty?
Yeah. Hal's way down here someplace. It's waiting for him. It's right at the beginning. Yeah.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R Plan for Chase, heirs of Alice Chase, on Orange Street.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Want to sign a mila now?
No. They carved out like two or three lots up here.
There were like two or something, one there and one that might be...
Do I do it or just do it all later? Because no one's here to take it.
Bill's the one who's taking it.
No, we'll just keep on moving.
That's fine.
I'll work with you.
Maybe we can get out of here before...
All right, discussion.
We could probably skip number one since we have people here for number two and three and four.
Two and three, all right.
Number one so fast, though.
Okay. One of those write, 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 discontinue kind of thing? I'll take number two. Okay, this is discussion. Maple Heights, Isabella Drive. What do we got, Bill?
As you may recall, we've discussed several times with Mr. Dumas, owner of Lot Two. Maple Heights, Isabella Drive is a three-lot subdivision off of Maple Street, kind of in the area of Monroe. And that was established and approved by the planning board as a private way. The surety that was proposed by the developer and agreed to by the planning board was that before they could sell lots one and two, they had to have binder course of paving down and, you know, some of the infrastructure done, like the drainage piping and stuff like that. And then before they let Lot Three be released, they had to have the top coat of paving and basically the project had to be completed. So, the surety was the release of a no-bill covenant on the third lot. So, you know, that gives you some background on what's going on out there. I'll let Mr. Dumas address the board and Mr. Maltz. Those are the two owners that live on the two lots out there with their concerns, so that you guys can discuss it.
Hi, guys. Brad Maltz. So, basically, just to add to the history a little bit to show you where we're at, yeah, I think it was about oh-eight-ish is when I actually acquired Lot One. So, I had gotten, it was a twelve-acre lot that was in the side of the actual property. I had held onto that to build until about 2012. In the 2008 timeframe is when the original builder that had done all the planning, everything else, basically went into foreclosure. They went bankrupt pretty much that year. So, I basically was buying it out of bankruptcy is when I got my first lot. At that point in time, it was kind of up in limbo, I think, for about two-ish years or whatever the timeframe was. It was sitting there. Got picked up by a company called Emerald Funding. Emerald Funding is when actually Bob actually had acquired the second lot, which is when you had done the no-bill covenant against the actual property. What we're interested in is there's still some finish work. We know there has to be done on it. We're trying to figure out if it's some way possible to make that into a public way at some point, and we want to figure out what the ability to get us to that point would actually be. We know there's work to be done. There's some current issues that Bob runs into, things like the way they graded it. Since they went into bankruptcy, they never finished the as-built and water runs off into his yard, not directly into the drainage. So, when they actually do the grading of the actual final coat, they're going to have to fix some of the grading issues in there. Beyond that, not sure what else is needed to actually...
It was a berm wasn't waived. The drainage isn't completed and it's really not totally known because with him going into bankruptcy, you know, there was no money to have Andrews come in and do an assessment of what's the remaining, you know, cost. And so, that's what I'm going to speak to. I actually have some...
He has more of that stuff. I just wanted to kind of get some of the background in. Where we're at is basically trying to figure out, is it feasible, is it even possible to try to see if this is something that we can turn into a public way at some point? Obviously, there's liability, plowing, road maintenance, long-term discussions.
Who holds Lot Three?
Emerald Funding still holds that lot. They're the ones that bought it out of bankruptcy.
The only thing I want to clarify, that's not accurate. They foreclosed, they were the lender to the original developer and they foreclosed on the original developer.
I think they still hold it.
They do.
Yeah, so they still hold it.
And they're current on their taxes.
Which lot is this?
So, if you're going down Maple and Isabella, it's Lot Three, which is basically...
First lot on the lot.
It's the first corner where the mailbox is basically on. It's a small two-acre sliver that the back of it basically abuts the White House. It's on Maple there on the corner of Isabella and Maple.
Have they, may I ask, have they been actively advertising for that lot? And why are they holding a portfolio and not trying to move it along? Because they have no responsibility to improve it.
They tried to sell it a while ago.
Ever since the bankruptcy, they've tried to sell it, but it's not a very desirable lot because it's like eighty feet wide with the exception of the road frontage. It converges very quickly to eighty feet and then it goes like seven or eight hundred feet. Not a desirable lot. And so, I bought the other lot, Lot Two, which is much better shaped, and that was in 2011. Even in 2011, they were pushing that lot really hard for a lot less money and they just couldn't get rid of it.
And they stopped at that point. Literally, we don't know why they're holding it.
It's a private way right here, right?
Yes, it's currently a private way.
I live on one. A lot of people live on a private way.
Yep. So, that's why we wanted to approach with a discussion of the ability possibly to consider that or not.
Has to meet standards, right? Has to meet some standards, I guess.
So, in lieu of a bond, we have the covenant, right?
Correct.
On the third lot?
Correct.
The last one?
Correct.
And that's pretty much how we maintain the surety that the road is going to be completed?
Correct.
So, if the road is not completed in a certain amount of time, what kind of...
We have no hammer.
We have no hammer.
We have no threat to pull a bond or anything like that.
And we don't either.
Right.
The waivers and stuff that we gave at the time with the understanding that it would never become a public way.
Correct.
Yes.
It is probably stated somewhere on that too because of those waivers.
Can I just say one thing? You know, when you go to the rules and regs for that time, they, you know, they heavily advocated bonds in here. There's little mention of going to no-bill covenant. And then, of course, an end date, you know, so that you lock in so you can seize, you can seize the bond. It'll only take a few minutes to, I have a copy I can give you guys.
So, have you received an estimate to repair the work yet for the contractor?
No, because that's Byron left, but Byron could do that for us, but it's going to, it's probably going to be thousands of dollars for him to do the assessment.
I mean, the road work.
No, she means like she's bringing up the grade and stuff.
Just take the plan, yeah, take the plan to a contractor, see how much it's going to be.
We can get that done.
And then get Emerald Funding to pay for it.
For just the road?
Yeah.
But what about, so you guys don't care about, about like the drainage and...
It should be done according to the plan.
Then you've got, then you need an assessment from someone like Andrews that's going to go through the entire development, figure out what's necessary.
That's up to Emerald to actually pull that off, but that still doesn't answer the...
I think that's a good plan.
That doesn't answer the final, I think, question of Bob, which is the public versus private. That gets us to a final way, and then I think there was a second question of public versus private.
Would I just go through?
Hold on. To try and answer Brad's question. Currently, the road parcel is owned by Emerald Leasing LLC. And they would be, they would have to be the ones petitioning the town for it to become a private way. So, assuming that were the case, I mean, a public way. Assuming that were the case, then I think it becomes a real question. I mean, it's great that these gentlemen are interested in getting their road completed, but they don't have the interest in the road itself to petition the town to take it as a public way.
We just have the homeowners. That's all we have is a homeowner association against the cul-de-sac.
That's why the homeowner association is a font.
Exactly.
Maintenance of the road after you've...
Are they approachable or...
I've been trying to contact Bob Dacey for probably months now.
I spoke to him a while, like years ago, and they barely got back to me at that time. I haven't tried in years.
Are they just not a valid company? I mean, why didn't they get back to us?
The numbers that you can dig up, Emerald Leasing, look it up online, the numbers are just like...
They're like two guys on Cape Cod that have like this, like thirty, probably all seats behind them.
What happens if they go bankrupt? You know, if they're, maybe they're bankrupt. You know, if you don't know anything about them, they could be bankrupt.
They're paying taxes every year.
Yeah, but at some point, they're probably just going to, why would they just not release it from their portfolio? I just don't understand.
Some people don't want it.
Apparently, take it as a loss. But you have full use of the property, I mean, the road.
Oh, yeah, no, we can use it.
No, I understand your position.
It's a cost like, you know, Brad's in a different situation than me, but I'm going to be retiring in like four or five years and I'm just finding out, you know, I mean, I kind of suspect that, you know, it's kind of be more money, but then you find out like with the association trust, you get hit with the liability. The maintenance, I don't mind, but then you've got all this mess with the road.
Yeah.
You know, and to be honest with you, I came into this where, you know, I got through the PNS and it's a public road and also that they were going to, they were going to finish the road, you know, the finished pavement and whatever else was required by the town. That's on my PNS.
But from, who was your PNS with again? Emerald Leasing or who?
It was with, Varisak is the lawyer that I had in town.
No, but who held the property that...
It had to be Emerald.
It was Emerald. It was Mike Dacey and Brian Dacey.
Same people.
I think you got to...
Yeah, absolutely. We can't do anything because we didn't take any money.
Yep.
We did it in lieu.
That's what the question was.
We would like to help you, but we can't. And as far as the public versus private way, Bill's right about the petitioning the town. And then I would probably require the things that we waived because it was supposed to be riding.
Can we get a list of those, by the way? Just to understand?
I'm sure it's recorded, right?
What's outstanding?
Well, no, no, even what, where the concessions were, the waivers for the private versus public.
Oh, yeah, it's in the decision.
It was? Okay, we'll have to go back and...
It's just, yeah, it's just recorded online, but if, you know, you'd want to come pass it through the board before you...
Oh, we're not going to do anything? I just understand the implications of it.
Yeah, I think that was the whole idea to waive all the extra stuff.
Trees versus this versus that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we won't have any tree stuff.
No, we're not doing that.
Told you.
And you're right, but could I just give my spiel?
Yes.
It's only like two or three paragraphs.
Sure.
And you can shoot me out of your... So, to reiterate what Brad asked, I'm requesting as a taxpayer and resident of Douglas that the planning board accept Isabella Street as a public way or make appropriate changes to bring Isabella Street up to a public way and identify to lot owners the changes needed to make Isabella Street a public way. Isabella Street is a three-lot subdivision called Maple Heights Estates that during initial planning board meetings was identified as a public way by the developer and planning board and later changed, this is through the meeting minutes, and later changed to a private way for the town to save on road maintenance, liability, plowing, et cetera. Okay? The planning board meeting, meetings for subdivision took place from 2005 to 2006. I purchased lot in 2011. Purchase and sales states that Isabella was public street and that sale Mike Dacey would finish the road. The reasons for my request for a public road, as a homeowner, I did not start the development. I also didn't develop the subdivision with town and then go bankrupt. When a developer went bankrupt, there was no money for the developer to finish the road and no money for Andrews Engineering to do, do a thorough assessment of the then-current unfinished state of the road. An assessment of Andrews Engineering could have determined the financial burden of remaining road costs, drainage berms, et cetera, to protect future lot owners in town. A bond was never requested by town. All of the lots, one, two, and three at that time should have been subject to a no-bill covenant to protect lot owners. Once the planning board knew the cost to finish the road, the town could have known total cost for the road completion and required a bond in the amount to release the three lots. The planning board only had a no-bill covenant put on Lot Three, which is a very long, narrow lot and has been listed for sale but unable to sell. Decision of the planning board to go from public to private way for the subdivision has saved the town the cost of road maintenance, road liability, and plowing, but the financial impact transferred to the lot owners is much higher than the cost burden to the town because of economies of scale. Appreciating that the town managers, selectmen, planning board are truly civil servants, looking out for our best interests, perhaps they can assist us in making Isabella a public way.
So, I heard in there, and I'm newish, right? A couple of years. I heard in there that if only the planning board had really done the right thing and had a bond required, then we wouldn't be in this mess. That's what I heard in that letter. Can they also petition the town to go for an embezzlement so they can put these monies over many years? I mean, can they do that?
No.
They can't. But they have full utility and full use of the properties. There's no loss in values particularly because we all must live on private ways. I don't know.
Got nothing.
Yeah.
Nothing at all.
And no money. Town has no money per se to do that.
It's up to, hate to say it, it's up to, I don't know.
Right.
The road's starting to pebble too.
Yeah, we'll have to get in touch with them.
Yeah, I think that would be the best bet. If they're paying their taxes, you know.
Then it must be out there.
And if you send a certified letter.
Yep.
You never know. They, they want, they have interest in it too.
That's right. The homeowners association that they belong to is for all three parcels, so.
They pay money into the homeowners?
No.
So it's zero dollars?
The other trustee, until they sell, sell that lot. Or, um, I don't know, I don't even know how to change it. I mean, Brad and I would probably have to get together.
Yeah, we've been taking care of the plowing ourselves and everything.
Yeah.
Because they have them reachable.
I mean, I don't even know how to start that. And the other loose cut is here that I don't even know what's gonna happen with the road. Okay, so when Lot Three is, is sold, is the road a separate parcel and we have to pay separate taxes on it? These things are like loose, you know, there's so many loose things with that homeowners association.
The road has to be correct before parcel three can be sold.
The road has to be completed for parcel three.
They can't do anything with parcel three. They can't build one or anything.
If they don't wanna sell parcel three, then we have no leg to stand on at that point.
You've gotta pass what?
We'll have to go full legal at that point. I got it.
I would just do a friendly letter. I mean.
Oh, yeah, totally.
If you never ask them, hey, I have this quote for ten thousand dollars. Can you get this fixed? My, you know, my land is getting flooded because your water, your land is putting water onto my land. There's gotta be, you know, they own it. They, they own the parcel.
Yep, I got our next steps.
So you're, they're creating erosion and, you know, degrading whoever's property is flooding. It's hard to call a story.
I just found all the notes also from two thousand six, so it's a long, long list. So I'll have to go through all that, so.
Yeah. Say, well, you should begin as with them.
Emerald, start there and we'll go. Okay.
I would at least, whose front yard is flooding still?
If we what?
Whose front yard is flooding still?
That's mine.
Okay, all right. At least get a quote to fix this from happening.
We can get a quote from Andrew's and a quote from like Southern Hating or something and just have.
That would be that much more because it's, it's, I'd say two inches in front of my property, so if you.
Just to bring it up a little bit, just to curb it back. It's not gonna kill it.
Talk to Lenny, he's a good guy.
Yeah, I used Lenny before.
Yeah, it was supposed to be graded toward the center of the cul-de-sac. And they, they never did an as-built to the rough grade under the paving.
That's probably not high enough.
You know, so it just followed, it just followed the rough grade on the gravel.
You mentioned a steel plate.
The steel plate is for like a drainage or something. I actually lifted it up before I came here and it was full. It, it had a drain cover, but it was.
It's a round one, right?
No, it was a square one.
It's a square one. Where is, if you're going in Isabella Drive, where is it? On the left or the right?
It's on the left, right, right before you hit the cul-de-sac.
Immediately on the left.
But in that corner, you follow the ditch. And as soon as the ditch ends right at the cul-de-sac, it's right there, big steel plate, about three eighths of an inch thick.
And there's no sewer out our way, obviously, so it would have to be tied into the cul-de-sac somehow.
Sure. Cause I know there's a cleanout. There's a manhole in the middle.
There's a manhole cleanout in the middle. And there's underground electrical around the side, but that's all.
The drainage should, that's where it should be going.
Did they put that cover over to keep sediment going into the catch basin? I think they did. Keep the sediment?
I, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I have to look at the plan, see if it was supposed to be a catch basin or what it was supposed to be.
Yeah, probably to, they didn't have a grate maybe, and they put a, just a steel plate on it.
It's been covered over by ground for years.
As a temporary thing, and then they just never came back.
So I'll go to Andrew's. I can get a quote from Andrew's. I can also get the, the original plan from them printed out, so we'll at least have that next time. And then we'll talk with Emerald, get some quotes from Lenny. We'll, we used to have more of the Doc.
I'm happy to participate in these conversations.
Oh, no, Bill, definitely.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So because it is a private, let me ask, because it's a private way, the town doesn't have a mechanism of water being transferred because it neglects a one property to a.
It's unfinished.
It's unfinished, right? Right. Well, it's, you know, cause we ran into that, we were in a, but everything was public way and the town came in and did something because it was public way. It's different.
I was gonna say, I live on a private way and I have a homeless association, similar situation. You guys read the homeowners association, go through it?
Not recently, but I have.
Pretty complicated.
I will go through it. It probably has, has language in it that says that each one of you guys control one third.
That is what it says.
So you guys control the majority of the vote. So you guys, you guys got a meeting of vote instead of fee. Send them a bill.
So it's funny, actually, somebody brought that up with me today. They haven't paid for like, I've been here for five years.
They'll sell it pretty fast.
Five years of plow? Luckily, I have a really cheap guy plowing.
But still.
Okay.
They give you some leverage anyway, if you.
A little bit or something.
I guarantee there's teeth in that that will help you sustain.
Thank you for that.
And you guys would be the controlling vote.
Okay, guys, I think that was all.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Keep Bill in the loop and.
So the moral of the story is, require surety, cash. Cash, performance bond.
Yeah.
Tripartite agreement. We like those things.
If it was a public way, definitely that would have happened. It wouldn't have been, but.
In an ente would be.
Cause it was supposed to be private, right?
Yeah, there, there's three years in the, in the actual planning board decision, but.
So if it was presented, there would have been a surety.
Cause it would have to be compacted and the, the out there.
Yeah, we'll bring Bill up.
All right. All right.
Thanks for coming in.
Good.
We all do remember two thousand eight, right? I wasn't here, no.
You weren't?
Nope.
Just barely.
The market dropped out.
We haven't been here ten years yet.
You were somewhere though. You still remember two thousand.
Ready, guys? All right. Item three, Cardinal Drive Covenant.
Why don't we jump to four and five, actually?
All right. You wanna do four and five now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do four and five. Now, that's Colin C. Okay, yeah, let's do four and five.
Now, number five should have said, it's a typo, it should have said Northwoods definitive subdivision.
Northwood Estate.
Right.
Northwood.
Yeah, you already wrote that.
Yeah, Bill.
So in your packet, we have a request for clarification, I believe, on the interpretation of that the, that the subdivision, Williams Estates, Williams Estates is on Northeast Main Street. Is it on the Uxbridge line? If it's not, you could throw a rock and.
Oh, yeah, it's on the.
It's right on the line.
So, um, they're, they're looking to sell the property to, the project to a potential buyer. And the buyer would like some commentary from the planning board that the subdivision is still valid and still in good standing with the town.
And it is.
Is that, is that clear enough, Colin?
If, yeah, I think, I think what they're looking for is basically hinges on the last sentence on number thirty-five, the purchase and sale. Sales subject to the buyer's satisfaction. We'll plan with confirmation provided by the solid affirmative. Subdivision plan is in good standing. We did receive town council opinion on that already.
Yes.
And they agreed to that, but in the purchase and sale, it's set specifically to the planning board, so.
Yeah, if we can send a memo through Bill.
Yeah.
Do you think that's okay?
Yeah. My recollection is a few years back, Colin came in with Deb Dunleavy and they requested, they were coming back every two years to get the covenant extended and extended and extended. And I think the heart of their request was that they didn't wanna have to come back every two years, so they wanted to get, get rid of that requirement. Am I making this up?
Yeah, no, two thousand six, one, two thousand six one was approved.
And, um, and the board went along with that, is my recollection. So, so from where I said, it is in good standing. Correct.
They said they wanna be in the same situation as that John Moe was in before, two thousand.
Right, right, yeah.
What's the name of this one? What's the name of this one?
On Northeast Main Street, going into Uxbridge near Blissful Meadows, across from the.
Southeast Main Street.
I'm not Bliss.
Linden Street.
Bosma's Golf.
Bosma's Golf.
Oh, then you're up the other end.
Where you get the McIntyre, that's right there at the Douglas, Uxbridge line.
Across from that soil fill project that we're in court over.
Anybody have any problems? Need a vote on that, Bill?
Yes, please.
Um, I'll make a motion to send a memo through Phil Conde that the Williams Estates definitive subdivision plan is still valid and in good standing.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Okay, next one is, it says Williams Estates, but it's supposed to say Northwoods.
Is it?
Yes.
Is it supposed to?
Yes.
No.
Williams Estates is gonna come in after the transaction occurs.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yes. I thought you just, you were talking about Williams. I thought you were talking about Northwoods.
No, no, Northwoods.
Yeah, we're moving on to Northwoods now.
We have another letter in here.
Yeah, so.
That's for the Williams.
That's for Northwoods.
No, that, that's Williams Estates.
We have an exact duplicate of that letter that says Willie.
Does it say exact amount?
Okay, so just cross everything out on this one.
What's the amount?
The amount, I'd have to go look. I, I wouldn't be able to find it in Maria's desk. Colin, do you have a copy of that?
One thousand, one ninety-nine.
All reaming funds.
We'll take that up next meeting.
Okay.
I've been chasing them for so long to get that letter.
Yeah.
And then it was the wrong one or this, you have this money?
It's a long story. It's a long story.
Do you have the eleven hundred ninety-nine for the other?
Yeah, I wanna give it to them. How often's that happen?
And then when, when the letter was in January, then we had the, remember the water being broke?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
On North Street.
Oh, yeah, I remember well.
And I didn't wanna, I was like, oh, I don't wanna go ask for money back. Have a pile of dirt and everybody wondering what's going on with the, so I'll wait till spring when it's done.
It was a bad valve, is what it turned out to be.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have that squared away next meeting.
And then the only thing I could do was for that memo, was there any chance, I'm supposed to schedule.
I'll get it tomorrow.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, take care.
Good luck, folks.
Yeah.
Good night.
Now, you wanna go back to three, Bill, or you wanna keep moving down?
Uh, we can do three. In your packet.
Three, Cardinal Drive Covenant, Form F, release of covenant and conditions.
Yes.
See that one? You don't have that one, Billy?
Yep, with Cardinal Drive. Did you talk to Colonel?
On the GBI.
Do you have a revised one?
Yeah, we got a new one today, yeah.
What?
Yeah, we got a new one.
Of what?
Oh, you're just gonna supplement the maintenance agree, or the homeowners association document at the registry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning board, I would say through Jay, it'll get approved, and the planning board doesn't sign that.
Right. Jay had some comments on, Jay had some comments on the homeowners association. And an earlier version was the one that got recorded. So the revised version for the applicant is going to replace the existing homeowners association. That's number one. Number two, Jay has reviewed the covenant that's in your to be signed folder, I believe, or any.
It is, yes.
And he's good with that as proposed. They, they went back and forth a few times on the language and he's good with the one that's in your to be signed. And lastly, there is also a release from the same covenant that's in your packet. What I'm going to ask is that the board sign it tonight, but authorize me to release it once I'm satisfied that the as-bills match the design drawings, the approved design drawings.
Am I good with that?
Yeah. Yeah, not a problem.
Anybody have any comments?
We have an as-bill that's been submitted, Ken. It came in over the weekend.
I'm going to.
Oh, you didn't?
I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Let the record show that Tracy has refused herself on this one.
To physically go up and look out.
You could see that.
I thought you were going to. I'm surprised you didn't.
Okay.
I was waiting.
I can grab it if you want.
It's under discussion.
Yeah, it's under discussion.
I'll see if I can find it.
Right. I was waiting from staying from phone.
Since you have a letter in here.
It's fine. What do you mean? Louis has that letter.
You have, right here, from Tracy Sharky.
It has Tracy Sharky's name on it.
Yep.
We had a motion and a second.
I'm just the paper.
We haven't had any motion yet.
I was just on the idea of him being able to hang on to it.
Oh.
I was just saying how.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Now, how about the restrictions?
Technically, it's already been recorded, but there's a few words that we're missing from it.
The motion, if you wanna have, call it a motion, is that Bill can hang on to the documentation till it's all reviewed? And he can be, he can release it.
Release it.
That's what he asked for.
Asked his purview.
And I said so moved, and he said second. I know it's.
Yeah, we, we can tie that into.
That's fine.
Remanded.
Yeah, you got, you can withdraw your motions.
I'll withdraw it.
And then second.
Move on the whole thing on one, one motion.
I just wanted to make sure that the restrictions that we all agree.
You know what happened? I saved two under the same name and I printed out the wrong one. So that's what happened. But, yeah, it'll be unamended, an amendment to the existing restrictions before the covenant is recorded.
The only thing that I'm really interested in is to make sure that, that the house is built.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, that's what Bill's gonna look at.
I took a walk up there today.
Yeah.
It looks like, I mean, it, that's why I wanna see a plan of the road, but it looks like the, the three houses are actually going in a wooded area. Is that, is that right? Do you know?
For the one that's closest to you, we didn't cut anything and it's a field. You know that, right?
Yeah.
Off a dogwood, yeah. But the other two, yeah, they're in the woods.
But that, right. Okay, one is gonna be in the field.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's gonna be a minimum of four hundred feet.
Yes. Yep. There's plenty of ground.
Property line.
So.
No.
From his house, I think.
From the house.
From the house.
I'd have to have it from property line.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's an open field existing.
I just wanted to clarify, it was from the house or the property. It's from the house.
That's what, that's what the decision had.
I remember when we discussed that.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Okay.
But that last, the last, um, lot, the one closest to you, it doesn't go to the stone wall. It goes beyond the stone wall, further away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that property line.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's a minimum of four hundred and you're going even further. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's a huge amount of space.
Originally, I, I thought to myself, I said, how are they gonna get that house four hundred feet back?
No, this is at the.
Uh, it's like oodles away. And the houses only are like, it can only be like fifty feet wide. It's not gonna be a McMansion.
You're not gonna build a nice.
Not very efficient, energy efficient wise.
No, you're not gonna see this, but I couldn't put my hands on the paper copy, which is in our office, but we do have an electronic copy also. It's up the road. Up the road itself. So I have to review that versus the design plan and see what it looks like.
Tracy explained it pretty clear. I, I, and I took a walk up there, so I kinda know. There you go. Yeah, I think one of the lots is all cleared or was cleared, right? I think, pretty much.
Maybe like.
I think so.
Ten thousand square feet of clear. They're three acres.
That's quite a well. And they have the water all up there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so. Anything further? No.
You good, Ken?
Yeah.
I will need a motion, Bill, right?
Yes.
And it would be to release the covenant.
To step, first do the covenant itself, the no build covenant. Authorize that as submitted to be signed.
Yeah.
And then release the same, there's a release of the no build covenant document. Prove that pending my review of the as-built versus the design.
Yep.
So.
You okay with that? He's gonna be able to do it first.
Yeah, I know.
And I'll have you in if you wanna take a look at it. I'm just looking at some of the lingo here.
So we're gonna make a motion to accept the covenant, right?
What's it said?
As submitted.
Release, release the covenant.
To release the covenant or accept the covenant?
Approve the no build covenant. And then approve the release from the no build covenant pending my review of the as-built versus the design.
Is that law fiend or something? What's, what's it got here? Are there secret words in here?
Correct. There's two documents that need to be signed.
Yeah. All right, so, Mike, you're making the first one to.
To accept the no build covenant, as written.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention from Tracy.
Sleeping.
And this does, this is for Cardinal Drive.
This is for Cardinal Drive, yeah.
And for Cardinal Drive, make a motion to release the no build covenant upon.
Satisfaction.
Satisfaction review of the print to make sure everything's fine.
An as-built.
Applied, applied to town engineer.
By, by belt, by town engineer, for Cardinal Drive.
Second. All right, motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention from Tracy? Motion passes.
Okay, so we got through that one.
The way in the form I'm having is.
All right. Number six, subdivision rules and regulations, subdivision regulations. This came in as a request.
I'll tell you later.
Last minute. I got an email from Maria.
Which one is this, sorry?
We said earlier we're gonna skip those because.
We are, but they're on there, but.
We have to discuss it, yeah.
So it came in from Les, I guess.
Good, where, where is it?
But.
Came in from our CMR PC rep.
Yeah, our CMR PC rep. But kind of short notice and get it on the agenda. We could have said no, I said yes, just so we can get the ball rolling. But if you want to put something on the agenda, anybody, any board member, you gotta go through Maria to Bill and I before, you can, you just can't say put this on the agenda for tonight. That's, that's, it has to be prioritized if we have room for it, so. We left it on there, so we can get the ball started if people are anxious to jump onto these, the subdivision regulations, solar regulations. We can make time if we have it on next meeting.
Can I make a suggestion? To, can I make a suggestion to form a subcommittee? Like we did for the sign bylaw?
Yeah, if you want to do that.
Um, I can't really remember how many people it was supposed to be. Can it just be two?
Just as long as it's not a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think.
No, it's Les is here.
I was gonna put him on the subcommittee.
He's the one pushing it.
Yeah, he should be on.
Okay, anybody else want to be on the subcommittee? I was on the sign.
I was on, I was on. We were three of us.
I was too, we did our time.
We did our time.
So if anybody else is interested, you could pick a night. Mike's doing double duty also, so. Could it be one person?
I mean, it, it's not unreasonable for him to come up with a proposal and then float the ideas to the board and for discussion.
Yeah.
I would much prefer that.
Yeah.
He's motivated for it.
Yeah.
You know, if he's got specific things that he wants to.
We can review our subdivision rules and go through them as a, as a board.
I'm game with that.
If he's got something specific that he wants to look at.
Or if there's an entire section, I mean, if his issue's section one because of A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, right.
It's fine.
And then the solar.
He did provide there was a, something in the packet.
Yeah, I have more, I think.
I didn't want to see us to read it.
He requested just steel websters.
Yeah.
So that's websters?
Yes, it's websters, yeah, yeah. So we can read just some, everybody read it over?
I know.
A little bit of knowledge of it when we come to our next meeting?
Wonderful.
If we can make time on the, if we can't, a subcommittee of one is.
All right, just throwing it out there, I didn't know from.
If anybody thinks of anything, or they want to review the subdivision rules, and we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can talk.
Yeah, I don't want to get bogged down though on, you know, rehashing things, so that's all.
I don't think we have to go through the whole thing.
We, we went through this thing in detail in 2000.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
2009.
I don't want to relive the sign bylaw.
No, I don't either, so.
It's extravagant, so.
Yes.
People go through your, the packet on subdivision rules and regulations? If there's something that pops out at you that you're interested in addressing, we can do it that way. Okay? That's good? All right, so we'll make time on one of the agendas when we have time. Very good. Okay, you're moving right along. Notice a 67. Right, we have three ZBAs. And one, two accessory apartments, three accessory apartments.
I did a ZVA last week.
I did two, actually. Not that we wouldn't do it.
Bill, is there anything you want to take? Do these?
You left your.
Did I, what?
Anything you want to go over?
I know, I was like, I was gonna, I said, no, make the ZVA applications at the end.
All right. Who wants his EBA?
I'll do Franklin.
Aaron does.
I'll do 122 Franklin.
I'll do one, I'd like to see how different our bylaws are.
You know, number eight is a repeat, same exact thing.
Oh, yeah, why is it?
Like literally because they wouldn't request it, they didn't continue it.
Here's one from Louis Tassino.
The same exact one, or the last one.
So.
Literally because they wouldn't continue the hearing.
So we gotta do this one again?
Yeah, it's the same exact thing.
So in theory, we should have the exact same comment.
Anybody know? Anybody who remember?
Maybe if the, I'll do Franklin.
Snap shot.
Franklin.
That one.
That one? Okay. Franklin Street. And this one is Roslyn Road, which is Wallem Lake Terrace. Anybody want to take this one? Please keep it all together now, don't get it all separated.
I will not take one with me.
Yeah, I'll pick, it don't matter.
Yeah.
See what we're gonna put on.
Um, I could do mine. Um, so the only thing that they're not meeting is the front setback.
What are they asking for?
So they're doing an attached.
What do they, what do they want to do?
So it is an attached garage.
Attached garage.
Addition to existing house.
Okay.
Um, they need a 25-foot side setback, an RA. Oh. They don't, never mind, I don't know why they put this, but they put side yard setback required, 25, provided 27. They said by extending an additional 24 feet for this addition, it would leave only three feet.
Are they kidding?
So if your neighbor put something three feet on their side, you could catch their house on fire with your garage. So they filled this out incorrectly also. So side yard, I don't know why it says 27. And they have 100 feet of frontage, they need 200.
On Franklin Street?
Yes.
It's not VR?
I don't know if this is correct, to tell you the truth. It says that it's all right, but this is from Larry. Side setback and front setback, they don't meet. They're going, the existing house is 33 feet, they need 50 foot.
They have 33 right now, but they want to use 27 of it.
Oh, wait a second. 40 foot right of way off of Franklin Street. Let anybody know?
Yes.
Is Franklin Street a 40?
Oh, here we go. So it has zero frontage on Franklin Street. It is claiming frontage on a 40-foot right of way.
Okay, that's right as you get to the top of the hill, the house that goes up in the back is, yeah.
Oh, the one on the right hand side?
Yeah, used to be a virus.
How did that happen? How did it become a lot?
It's been there forever.
The tape survey was done in 88, so I don't know what the age of the house is.
That's the healthiest property that's been there forever. You know which one I'm talking about, yeah. It used to be the grandmother and grandfather stuff, I think, wasn't it?
In a nutshell, what are they trying to build?
And, and a different, where the master bedroom above.
And currently, they have 27 feet, what do they got currently?
They've got 33 feet on one side and 43 feet on the other side.
What is the side?
Their application is saying that they are going to. Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Bear with me. So their dimensional standards, they filled out as side yard at 25, provided 27. Uh, they didn't do the other side, I guess, I'm not sure.
So which side are they proposing the addition to be on? Based on that plot plan, or the, not a plot plan or a drawing?
Um.
Doesn't that clearly, do, do they not show the addition on that plot plan?
No.
Then, but send it back. You know, they should, I mean, not, I mean, why don't people fill out what they're supposed to do?
I just, I'm just going through something like this in Westboro, and the, the addition shouldn't be on there.
Here's on this. This is, here's, here it is on this little planner here.
Oh, yeah, so I can see it's like three feet from the property line.
Correct.
No. I don't hear what the situation is.
That's too, that's too close.
Three feet?
Are the people.
What, what is it VR side yard? In, in the least restricted?
25.
25?
It's all right, this is an all right zone.
So, but is there anywhere in town that's less than 25, any zone?
15, yeah, VR.
15.
Meet the 15 or something, at least to get in the ballgame, I mean, this is insane, so.
So you have an objection to the proposal?
Of course we do, yes.
Are you sure? I mean.
What am I missing? Am I not have enough conviction here to suggest that?
Well, I need a consensus from the board.
Of course, I'm just, of course.
You know, with zero feet of frontage and 20,000 square feet, I don't know.
And they have room to go back, it's, is it a longer lot to go back?
So it looks like the lot behind it, do you know what it is? Trailers, maybe?
I don't believe there's any.
One of those little things.
I don't believe there's any trailers up there.
You know.
No, I don't know what those are.
Those are the ones, yeah.
Where are we?
Off of Franklin.
These little things right here, one of these.
Oh, that's the dugouts for the Martin Road Park.
I thought they were tractor trails, so, um, so who owns that property?
That's probably what it is.
Oh, I'm taking it the wrong place now, too.
Which property?
Who owns the back lane?
Actually, that was taken the wrong place, too.
So the town of Douglas owns that?
Correct.
Oh, okay, they didn't have an objection to the, I don't know, did they?
If it's in your packet.
It's not in the packet.
I was thinking of the wrong place, so, okay.
I thought.
Yeah, I thought it was at the beginning, it's at the, it's at the other end, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or it meets Martin Road, not.
What is the red? Is that the, the lot in question?
No, that's assessor's notification, so that's the parcel.
No, I know that, what's that?
Yeah, that's the parcel, that's the subject parcel.
So it's a long, it's a deeper lot.
So it's got no road frontage.
Right, it is what, a shared driveway or something?
I know, yeah, I know where it is now.
No, that's town land.
There's a little, yeah, there's a little ranch house right there.
So how do they have?
I don't know, I can't answer that question.
Been there forever.
Okay, well, how did the town take that land? Like, who owned it before the town?
I think Joel Smith owned it before the town, didn't he?
Probably.
Yeah.
See, it's incumbent upon people to some degree to understand when they buy a property, regardless, now, if they've been there 240 years through six generations of people, that's different.
Yeah.
But you have to understand your property before you buy a, a landlocked property, you know, through some, over the public, you know, over the town land with, with, you just can't apply for things that, you buy a difficult site and then you ask for permission after.
No, they.
You better know what you buy.
So it's misleading on this chart.
The permission is everywhere.
Also, there's 136 feet in the backyard. They are saying that, um, they have a wooded valley with a steep grade, and it's a swampy area.
Yep, it is.
That's true.
Very true.
So.
Yeah, it's very, it's very isolated and secluded, and the ballpark, or is the whole back of it? It, it's a, it looks like a driveway, there's a house on the road on Franklin Street, then it looks like there's a driveway going in and there's another house behind it. And then behind that is all the land that the town owns where the ballpark is. So they're out there, they're out there on their own.
Their own gig.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna, can build alongside of them, right?
Not to my knowledge.
How long is the addition? How far does it go?
Nobody can ever build alongside of them?
I don't.
Let them, let them.
28 foot, I think you said.
You got the grand shrunk there.
They had 27 there, now they want to go to three?
No, they don't, they didn't fill out the chart correctly.
We acquired the trunk line.
Right, yes, that's all us.
So the thing is, is let them be the side of butter. So if they want to have three feet, let them have three feet.
Yeah, I.
Less gross than all.
I'm gonna maintain what I always say, if the neighbors don't mind, I don't.
I was just gonna say that.
The town don't mind.
We got a list of the butters, so.
Yeah.
So the, the butter evidently doesn't care.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not, we're just, we're just making our opinion, though. It's the zoning board that's going to ultimately decide this. This is just an opinion they want from us.
Right.
So the zoning board will decide it.
And they're looking for variance, that's another special.
They're looking for our input, that's all.
No, but is this a variance eventually?
Yes.
Right, so you need to meet the criteria.
Right. And they, but that's what the zoning board can do, they can.
Yeah, it would be the zoning board that would.
Yeah, but these, these just come before us for our opinion on it. And I, I mean, I, I know where this is now, and I don't see anybody being able to build anywhere around there. The ballpark's way behind it, it's, it's a wooded area.
Lanu's house, isn't it?
Look, that's, that's where, that's where it is, it's Lanu's house.
Right. That's where I, yeah, I know.
The little yellow ranch that was done, yeah, right. The one that's behind.
In this situation, I would say no problem, really.
I, I just, I have.
You know, I, I have an idea.
If you saw it, Aaron, you'd, you'd understand.
Yeah, I know exactly where that is.
But three feet is, that's, that might as well be on the property line nearly.
So it's up to us to say, our opinion is yes or no, so we'll have to.
Well, I'll just abstain.
You're saying no.
I'm saying no.
Yeah. Kenny?
I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah. Mike?
Uh, yeah.
No.
I have no problem.
Okay, so there's one no, two nos, one, two, three yeses.
I have an issue with the application, I'm just gonna state that, because it's not correctly referenced, and they're actually proposing a porch on the front, which they also need front setback variances for. So they're actually not, this is, huh?
Now we know that, okay.
So they're actually going, I don't know what these sections are, maybe six feet? Probably. Yeah, six feet towards the front, so they already have 33, now they're going even closer to the front setback line. So that's nowhere mentioned in here.
I just want to go on record, to the people of Douglas, be clear, concise, and informative on all their ANRs, on all their variance applications, special permits, everything.
And they're not even, yeah.
Please help us, help you, because if we don't have information, it is difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tracy, if you feel there's a lack of information. Well, Tracy, if you feel there's a lack of information...
No, there's a quorum. There's a consensus, I mean, that it's, if the neighbors don't mind.
About the front setback, though.
The front setback wasn't mentioned, that's why.
It's incomplete.
You didn't mention they were putting a porch on, too.
Right.
Now, I'll go now, okay. Too much is left out.
Yeah, they need to, you know, amend it. Let them amend it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Could we send it back and have it...
Well, we could recommend to them the setback, yeah.
All right, so if I look after my own hand, I feel that it's inadequate application, incomplete application.
All right. Don't know where it's at. Roslin? Where's Roslin?
Roslin's off of Wallen Lake Terrace.
What we have is, uh, some people have two lots, so they combined, made it a ten thousand square foot lot. Mostly they're all small, little five thousand square foot lots. So they have a hundred foot of frontage. It's a hundred by a hundred by a hundred, is what they have obtained.
One of the bigger lots up there.
Yeah, and one of, they combined the two to build one house. Obviously, it's RA up there. So what they're requesting is on their front, obviously, road frontage is only gonna be a hundred feet, instead of two. The lot area is only ten thousand, instead of the ninety. But on their front yard setback, where it's supposed to be fifty, they wanna keep it at forty-two. Their side yard is supposed to be twenty-five. They're requesting have ten on each side, ten and ten. And on their rear setback, instead of twenty-five, twenty-two. Here's the plan. There's layout, there's a well and they need room for the septic. So they're doing it all that, and this is the house plan. Right here. So what they did is, they did it right by combining two lots together to try to make it as feasible as possible. Right there it is. And I think with what they're doing, I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either.
No, with those setback numbers there. I mean, they did it the right way, by grabbing two lots, putting them together.
Right.
And this is for a special permit.
Yeah, you may have a problem with it?
You know they lost that grant, probably, so you put two feet, right?
A what special permit?
Yeah, I heard that.
I'll tell you later.
What special permit? What special permit?
That's what this is following, this special permit.
Special permit to bill.
And it's, it's...
Oh, to bill, okay.
Special permit and variance.
It's a variance, though, too.
Well, they didn't mark it that way.
Special permit is for the lot and for the frontage and side, the setback that for variances.
Great, but we shouldn't be marking their...
No, we can't mark anything.
No.
What was I supposed to mark?
You check which one, do you have an objection or you don't have an objection?
Well, the board's thing was, we have no objection, right?
Of this?
Well, the majority of the board had no objection.
Okay, we'll start you.
No, not that one, on the one that Tracy's doing. Did you change your mind on that?
I have no opinion.
Problems with this one?
No.
Good?
Then right there.
I'm okay with that.
Good, good, good.
I'm okay with that. We have no objection on that one.
Okay. So...
Okay, on this one, Tracy still wants an answer from us.
Back to me. Yeah, I need an answer.
This is the one that lacks clarity and clarity.
And frontage, they're asking for frontage weavers, frontage variance. They didn't ask for the porch to go on.
I didn't know, based on the lack of information on that one.
They just...
No objection, or should we say objection? The meeting is tomorrow. I don't know if these guys are on it or not.
But I, I'm stating that, I'm saying no on the fact, on the fact of lack of information and clarity and completeness. I mean, that doesn't mean no. It just means they gotta fix this thing and amend it.
It means you don't recommend it.
At this point, I don't recommend it.
Yeah, no.
At this point.
And we want the ZBA to sort of take pause and say, what do they mean?
They should have.
This is just for the special permit, for some reason, that's all.
Nothing on the folks, just be complete, that's all. Gosh.
Say, say what I'm wrong with.
What do I really think?
Okay.
Did you, did he get everything back on that? Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm just going by what I'm seeing. That's all I'm seeing, too. I don't see any reference for variance.
Right, there's no reference.
No.
Then again, they need to complete it.
It's not my special, right, that's it?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you're saying that they don't need variance.
I didn't say that. I said, based upon what I'm seeing there, I only see special permit references.
Reference, right.
It was only advertised as a special permit.
Write that in there.
That, yeah, that's my part.
Notice that we don't see reference.
That's mine, I'm pretty sure unless I only had a...
I know there was a...
I'll look later, hold on.
And they may have...
We have no objection.
I think this came before the board previously, too, I think.
Yeah, but some people will try to avoid the whole variance thing because of the criteria part.
No, 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 that's not the case here. I think they didn't advertise the special permit the first time.
So they had to come back and do another one.
Yeah, we saw this one. We saw this one already.
Exactly, exactly. So I think they made an error and didn't do the special permit the first time.
And now they did the variance the second time.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's strange.
No, I think they're still going with the variance from last time.
So whenever we apply, we say variance and/or special permit, just to be clear, to be clear. They let the board decide.
And you don't need, you don't need two separate applications, you know, like they've been doing. They've been doing two separate applications.
Yeah, that's...
All right. So we're okay with Franklin?
Yeah.
Okay with that one? And Roslin?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, Franklin, I put an objection.
Yeah. Excuse me, Franklin, we said, we had a...
Yeah, lack of...
Yeah, I said objection.
Clarity and completeness of the application. And they forgot to mention the farmer's porch on the front.
Roslin, okay.
Okay.
All right. One oh three Shore Road. This is, you know who?
Why is this coming back again?
Well, according to the applicant...
They withdrew the last time?
Nope.
No. Why?
They didn't allow for a continuance.
Who didn't allow?
The board.
Zoning board?
Zoning board?
Sure we did.
I saw the meeting.
I don't think so.
Yeah, they withdrew. They withdrew.
They withdrew.
Yeah, that is true.
They withdrew.
I'll watch the video.
They withdrew.
Was there a request for a continuance?
There was a request. They didn't want it continued. They asked for information and they had no information, so they withdrew.
Which means they gotta go back again.
Yeah, it's the same permit application.
So it's fresh now?
Right, it's new.
It's new, it's new.
Nothing wrong with that.
No.
All right, this is one of those lots that, uh, backs up against a lake there that is, you know, Shore Road. There's a number of these, yeah, all these lots that are, of course, don't meet RA zoning rights now because they were built, you know...
A hundred years ago.
Yeah, so they, because I guess they fail all the current regs here, the applicant is requesting a variance so that the family dwelling on the property can remain. So I guess there's threat of the prob, it's already got a home on it.
Right, right, right. This is putting it right. This is getting it right.
This is trying to get it right, yeah. So I think last time we, I mean, it's the same, all these lots are the same size, right? So I think we said, uh, we were okay with it because, you know, all those other lots are the same.
Be done with this.
So I...
We agree.
So we have no objection to the variance?
Yeah, it's been there since the Swam Lake development, yeah.
I don't see... And nothing's changed. It's the same thing.
The lot is the same.
Yeah, but...
I don't know, but...
The documentation here is the same as it was before?
Oh, as far as I know. I mean, there's no indication in this presentation that anything has changed.
Okay.
So they got kicked back, or you're saying they withdrew?
They withdrew.
Now they're putting it through again. So, do you wanna take a peek?
No, it's not thirteen, eight.
You know, lots are about fifty feet wide.
They can go back every two years.
Sixty-six hundred square feet.
So it's going back again.
Oh, that probably...
Yeah, it's already...
Yeah.
We probably recommended this was okay, but the zoning board...
Same.
I don't remember, honestly.
Didn't take our advice, or didn't wanna take our advice, right? So they, I mean, they had their own...
It's their priority.
Yes.
Yeah, I got no problem.
Yeah, I remember. I have no problem.
Okay?
Yeah.
I had it right there.
We have no objection?
I'm abstaining, as the last one also.
Okay. We have no objection.
Accessory apartments.
Hey, before you go marching on, you're requesting a variance, okay.
And a special permit.
There's three of them.
No mention of that in the document.
It should be...
This is the only explanation of what is being requested.
Yeah, just variance, it's on this.
There's no info here, really, other than that little paragraph.
Okay.
It's a useless document.
That's it, right, just, yeah, it says variance, yeah.
Who would issue this special permit?
Same.
Or them?
No, them, yeah.
I think it would be them.
Site plan review, special permits.
Extension fee means...
Wait...
Just sign Anderson's, seriously.
It's fifty dollars, that means our renewal.
It's renewal.
You don't?
Okay. Yeah, that's why I looked, to see the typical fee. So we have three renewals on accessory.
That one here is not...
Yeah, but in further down, there's a renewal fee of fifty dollars. They missed, they missed the box. I mean, it does say existing fee. Extension fee to extend it, right.
Which one are you looking at first?
What's that A P P L number?
Everybody else, huh?
Application number?
I have a Potter one on South Street.
I met, I met Mary Wright today. Now I know.
Say hi, or...
We look at her name every minute, being this all the time.
Mike, say hi, or she's listening.
Hey, Mary.
Yeah, I mean, they all look, they're all renewals.
They're all renewals. They're all signed.
Bill, any questions on those?
Nope.
Well, let's just hit them one by one and see.
One by one.
Start with Walum.
Okay, accessory apartment, special permit, extension, Patrick and Leslie Fleming, two ninety-five Wallen Lake Road.
Um, nothing's changing, right? The forty-four square feet. Oh, they just did nine hundred forty-four. Make a motion to grant the extension for two ninety-five Wallen Lake Road.
Second.
Two ninety-five Tracy.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain, the motion carries.
South Street.
Okay, accessory apartment, special permit, extension, Mark in Morena Potter, two eighty South Street.
Yeah, there are no changes here. It's N A and A. They paid the extension fee. Will suggests they pay this extension fee. And so everything is sort of the same. Mother-in-law and father, I live with them. That's terrific. I mean, they have a long life.
This is for, this is for renewal, right?
Just a renewal, yeah, but, yeah, but...
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
They all pass this current on Walum?
Okay, Aaron made the motion?
Well, she signed it. Christine signed it.
Second.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain, the motion carries. And the last one? accessory apartment, permit, extension.
For their parents.
Eddie Ann, parent, sixty-seven Northwest Main Street.
Again, this is renewal, an extension as such, and it's only a six hundred square foot accessory apartment. And efficient space, and it is for one of their parents, that's their mother. And they paid their fee, apparently, and, uh, because it's been signed, say, huh? Well, just signature of applicant, but not signed by the town clerk. It's supposed to be signed by the town clerk?
The original application.
Okay, go ahead, Mike. Finish up the...
No, no, you were doing a good job.
Okay, so, based on that, everything is the same, I make a proposal to move this forward and accept this as it is.
Seconded extension, okay.
The extension is.
Made by Aaron, seconded by who?
Ken.
Ken?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain, the motion carries.
Sign vouchers.
Signed vouchers.
Back to number one.
Oh, this is the estate?
Our next meeting is seven ten?
Number one.
Number one.
Alice Chase.
Oh, yeah, we didn't go back to that, yeah. All right, vote, notice of intent to sell.
Yeah, they wanna take that out of chapter sixty-one and do one lot.
Yeah, that's the same Alice Chase. It's the same estate, yeah. We already approved that.
Customized, right? They do that, they make a...
Yeah, we can make a motion to...
Okay, anybody can make the motion.
So... Don't they have to get the selectmen involved or something?
This is the first step. They're looking for input.
I'll make a motion to support the proposal for removal of this parcel out of chapter sixty-one from the heirs of, or the estate of Alice Chase.
Well, I think what you wanna say is, um...
Please.
No objection.
You have no...
We have no objection, because we're not actually, we're not making...
Right.
We're not exercising our...
Right, a first refusal.
Right, a first refusal.
I'll second it. Motion made by Aaron. We have no objection. Seconded by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain, the motion carries. All right, now, we have a bunch of stuff to sign. We still have a MyLar to sign and...
That's right.
How the minutes, white, they're good.
What?
The minutes, good.
They look good to me.
They look pretty, yeah?
He's just saying it because he...
He's just prandoing it there. Mary, these are great.
Good job, Mary.
Nope.
I read through it, too.
I'll leave that we accept the meeting minutes as written for Tuesday, April twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aaron's got an abstain.
I have to abstain. I was absent. I was in Singapore.
Can I bill anything?
At the summit?
Yeah, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with CMR PC regarding our zoning maps at ten AM. So outside of a quorum, anybody is welcome to attend.
Is it here?
It is here. I'm sure you'll all be fighting over it, but...
Les is gonna be here.
Three people.
I have OSHA, I have OSHA training tomorrow, so that's...
How does this sound, like, pretty good?
I'll let you know after tomorrow's meeting.
They haven't said nothing?
Yeah.
Zoning map sound.
I'm just hoping, like, I'm gonna get something straight.
Like dripping water.
Yeah.
Try to get it.
We have stuff to sign here.
We have to the Paper Reduction Act. We should all have, like, little...
Watch it. I'll have to do double next time.
All right, this is, this is the Registry of Deeds.
How it's signatures.
Signature page. So however you sign, this page is how you sign everything else the rest of the time you're on the board.
Oh, man.
Chicken scratch.
We do this every year, don't we? Every year, when we reorganize, yes.
I can change it here.
This stuff is gonna start to take off, 'cause the town is starting to do it.
It's not on here.
What's that?
We need to be prone to it, wait till it's all going.
How come Mike's not on here?
I'm working on the drone one.
I didn't put it together.
No, there is one. It's been adopted.
Someone in my office?
So where it go?
I don't know.
It's, it's the ones, it's...
We can write them in.
Yeah, you can write them in.
Print your name right here and then just sign it.
As neat as possible.
Yeah.
Oh, geez, you want me to do it?
So it's personal when people look, looking at it.
This is the...
I don't disagree with you.
I know, this is our land, you know, you have my land, we're a drone, so...
Okay, this is, do we have to sign this? I don't see...
What do you have that for?
I don't know. Why do I have that? It's in the sign folder.
We're signing other people's stuff.
I forget your name, Mike?
He's trying to write nice and neat.
Have this one, too?
Perfect.
Wow. Next.
That looks good, Mike.
Isn't that great?
That's great.
Wonderful.
Nothing on this, any, this is a...
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah, you guys sign this.
Why didn't normally put my middle initial?
No, not, not this.
But that's okay.
Then don't sign it.
Don't sign it that way.
Huh?
Don't sign it that way.
They just want it the way you will sign it.
These you don't have to.
So what they do, when somebody brings the MyLar, they check it against a person's name.
Just do it the way you would do it normally. See this?
Well, that's, that's okay. I'll put these.
Sign it just like that.
You have to do it like that.
Really?
Yeah. If you don't normally do your middle initial...
You need a new stamp.
They made the mistake, okay. Actually, I should have put my middle initial, because I have a grandson with the same name.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
He's too young.
Is he on a planning board? Not yet.
But there's been a few mix-ups.
Oh, yeah?
I guess I don't.
At the daycare or what?
Oh, two places, yeah. Whoops, what about the second?
This stamp is only for the paper copies, so if you wanted to actually put your initial, you can do it. These, these stamps don't go anywhere, it's the, the, you know, the markers.
Looks the same as it does.
Yeah, if I don't put my middle initial when I go to the bank.
That is dangerous, especially when it gets to be a teenager.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a junior, so.
We usually go by the old and the new.
Yeah, I'm a junior.
I'm the old.
When my dad was alive, I had to sign a junior all the time, whatever, he was always senior.
Oh, I thought I turned about the next year.
Twenty years.
Yeah. I thought I was twenty-five, I know, but I just turned twenty-five when we ran, I'm pretty sure, and it's been almost ten years.
Wow.
It was twenty-ten, I know, it was twenty-ten, because that was the year of the tea party and the.
Yeah, the tea party, oh, remember that?
They had the big thing at, those garages there where you got.
We have two more years, yeah. Eight, two more. That's right, twenty-twenty. And the year twenty-fourteen, yeah, it's on.
What's happening with, like, the website updates, as far as the boards, as far as information, forms? Specifically, the planning board, or community development forums, related forums? Does anybody maintain them, I'd say?
I do, when I see there's an error, or notified there's an error, I'll update it. Most of the action happens on the bulletin board section, which is, um, updated after each meeting and agendas are posted there, and, you know, of course, the video section, as well as the front page are most active. But, you know.
In my home.
Election comes, and then I don't think of it right away, so there might be a little lag. The documentation is there, it might not be the most easy to find in some cases. We have a new website that's going to be rolling out.
Oh, that's exciting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really gone downhill, no offense.
That might be part of the reason things are like.
Okay.
Because now, now people are actually using two websites right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Let me see what I gave you last. Oh, okay. Oh, you did two?
Oh, you didn't sign this one?
No.
Okay.
What?
Yeah, there's two.
There's two copies, okay.
There's two copies, yeah.
You're putting them in.
Okay, that was.
They carried us tonight into the dump truck to take them to long mornings, so they weren't stressed out.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, there's two there, yeah.
So they're sleeping, they get locked out, and they're sleeping on the ground inside their house, it's in the meatchicks. What you do, you check either during the morning or you do it at night, so they're sleeping, and you put them in their crates, and they just wake up, and they're in there, and they're not stressed out at all, and then you bring them in. Packing, processing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As much as that sounds like fun.
No, I was just teasing, totally one hundred percent teasing.
Are you doing that tonight?
Okay, last one.
Yeah, I gotta go back nine thirty, it's a couple people meeting, there's only forty-nine of them, but.
We had a magic pump in the Mylar street.
Being revised.
No, there's just one Mylar.
Will be revised? Website?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, Ernie, can I ask you which one I abstained from?
Because a lot of stuff has disappeared, you know. I remember.
Disappeared?
I looked in there, and you used to be able to go in there and.
Which one is?